Good evening. I'd like to call the zoning board of appeals for Tuesday, November 18th, 2025 to order. Will the city call the roll, please?
Ms. Defoe.
Here.
Mr. Friedman.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Libbit. Mr. Jenkins.
Present.
Madam Chairperson, you have a quorum to conduct business.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
None at this time.
Okay, so we will move into the public hearing. For those of you who haven't joined us before, let me briefly describe how we conduct business. The city will call the case by the case number and read a brief description of the case. We ask the appellant to step to the microphone, state your name and address on the record. You're going to need to speak very closely to the microphone in order for us to hear and understand you, and then also sign in at the sign-in sheet on the podium, and then explain to the board what you're asking for and why. Then the city will read a findings of fact. We'll ask you to agree or add any other facts at that time. Then the city will give a recommendation. You can also speak after the recommendation. Then we'll open public comment. So if you're here to speak on a case, that'll be your opportunity to come forward and give your comments to the board. Then the board will deliberate, make a decision, and then move on to the next case. And I will guide you through each step of the process. So will the city call the first case, please?
First case is 25-25. The appellant, Jim Marks, owner of Marks Green Revocable Trust, is requesting the following waiver from the board to expand existing approximately 308 square feet attached one-car garage into a two-car approximately 454 square feet garage with a non-conforming total side yard setback of 17 feet 8 inches total sides and 7 feet 8 inches on the least side proposed, 20 feet total size required, and 8 feet 0 inches minimum least side required, a variance of 2 feet 4 inches total sides and 4 inches least side. The property is located on the west side of Chelmsford Road between Webster and Rock Creek at 29909 Chelmsford Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 762411401004, Zoned RA Single Family Residential. This appeal is to Section 5.193, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Great, thank you. Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
If you could each state your name and address into the microphone for the record.
James Marks, 29909 Chelmsford Road, Southfield, Michigan.
Thank you.
Susan Green, 29909 Chelmsford Road, Southfield, Michigan.
Thank you very much. And could you explain to the board what you're asking for and why, please?
We're asking for 2 foot 8 inches variance on the setback so we could turn our one-car garage into a two-car garage now that I'm retired due to health reasons and feel it's necessary to get a car, a second car in the garage, and also bring the house up to current standards of two-car garages without being an eyesore.
Okay. Anything to add? You don't have to. Just wanted to offer. Okay. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
The appellant, Jim Marks, owner of Marks Green Revocable Trust, is requesting the following waiver from the board to expand an existing approximately 308 square foot attached one-car garage into a two-car approximately 454 square feet garage with a non-conforming total side yard setback of 17 feet 8 inches total sides and 7 feet 8 inches on the east correction, the least side proposed, 20 feet total sides required, and 8 feet 0 inches minimum least side required, a variance of 2 feet 4 inches total sides and 4 inches least side. The property is located on the west side of Chelmsford Road between Webster and Rock Creek at 29909 Chelmsford Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 762411401004, Zoned RA Single Family Residential. This appeal is to Section 5.193, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. The properties to the north, south, east, and west are Zoned RA Single Family Residential and are developed with single-family dwellings within one of the Cranbrook Village subdivision developments. Field inspection of the surrounding area reveals the properties to the north, south, east, and west are mostly one- and two-story single-family residential dwellings with attached garage. The exteriors are made of mostly brick with wood and/or vinyl siding. There are a few homes with detached garages, and a few homes have carpets. The construction surrounding properties ranges from approximately 1,500 square feet to approximately 2,700 square feet. The surrounding properties are mostly conforming with lot size setback and lot coverage requirements. The subject property is a 1,240 square foot, single-story ranch-style home built in 1959 with an approximately 308 square foot attached garage. The subject property is part of Cranbrook Village Subdivision Number 4.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
I question, I think we're number five. I may be wrong.
Based on our GIS system, it indicates it's number four.
Okay.
I can certainly clarify that if you need.
Okay. I don't, I don't think it's vital to the decision of the variance. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay. Any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
We're going to keep the architectural integrity the same, so the slope of the roof would remain the same. So it'd really be seamless as you drive down the street and look and see the rest of the houses. If you look on page one, there we go. And the current, if you go to page three, you'll see it's what we currently have. Yes. Um, yeah, that. That's from, that's from Google Maps.
Okay. Will the city read the recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is favorable consideration with the following condition. Appellant secures all required permits and final inspection approvals from the Southfield Building Department. This recommendation is based upon the following. The proposed waiver would not create a substantial detriment to the public good and would not substantially impair the intent of the ordinance, and the proposed waiver appears to be consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and the regulations which apply to the zoning district, and the proposed waiver appears to be in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and should not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add before we open public comment?
Thank you.
Okay. So we will open, oh, I'm sorry.
Can I just say one more thing? We have talked to all our neighbors, and they're all fine with us.
Okay, great, thank you. So we'll open public comment on this case. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this case? Now would be your opportunity. All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Rogers?
I don't have a problem with it. There seems to be enough homes on that street that have the two-car version. A lot of them have the one-car version, but the ones that have the two-car version, just like Mr. Marks was explaining, the architectural integrity will be kept in hand. So I have no problem with that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Friedman?
I have no issues with it.
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins?
I highly favor it because I think it's going to acknowledge and approve the neighborhood. And basically, they're, the neighbors have no objection to it, which is, which is, is a blessing itself. Okay, so I highly recommend this.
Okay, thank you. I agree. I have no concerns about the request, and I think it definitely keeps with the neighborhood, and appreciate you keeping the integrity of the design with, with it. So, Mr. Rogers, will you make a motion?
In regards to case, ZBA case 25-25, the appellant, Jim Marks, owner of Marks Green Revocable Trust, is requesting the following waiver from the board to expand existing approximately 308 square foot attached one-car garage into a two-car approximately 454 square foot garage with a non-conforming total side yard setback of 17 feet 8 inches total sides and 7 feet 8 inches on the least side proposed, 20 feet total size required, and an 8-foot 0-inch minimum least side required, a variance of 2 feet 4 inches total sides and a 4-inch least side. Property is located on the west side of Chelmsford Road at 29909 Chelmsford Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 76-24-11-401-004, Zoned RA Single Family Residential. I make a motion to approve the waiver and allow Mr. Marks to create a two-car garage from the one-car garage, basis upon the following. The proposed waiver would not create a substantial detriment to the public good and would not substantially impair the intent of the ordinance, and the proposed waiver appears to be consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and the regulations which apply to the zoning district, and the proposed waiver appears to be in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and should not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Seconds.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Your request is granted. Just work with the building department on your permits.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Will the city call the next case, please?
Case number 25-27. The appellant, Kevin P. Farrell of Great Day Improvements LLC, representing the owner, Benay Dabney, is requesting the following waiver from the board to construct an approximately 120 square foot attached sunroom, category 2, to a legal non-conforming single-family residence with a non-conforming rear yard setback, 16 feet proposed, 35 feet required, a variance of 19 feet. The property is located on the east side of Lady K Court between Tyler Street and Idens Brook Court and south of Islesworth, Isleworth Point at 28416 Lady K Court, Sidwell Parcel Number 762418177041, Zoned R4 Single Family Residential. This appeal is to Section 5.193, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Great, thank you. Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Mark Dixon. I am representing Great Day Improvements. Kevin couldn't be with us this evening. My address is 29063 River Oak Drive, Romulus, Michigan, 48174.
Okay. Do we have authority for him to speak on behalf of Kevin?
The way it was applied for, it was applied for is the appellant, Great Day Improvements LLC slash Kevin Farrell. So he is with Great Day Improvement.
Kevin is no longer with the, with the company. So they asked me to, to represent him. I'm the closest representative.
I understand. We just usually need written authority from somebody, but if the city's saying it's from the entity, then I'm fine.
Yep.
Okay. Please let us know what you are asking for and why.
Mrs. Dabney is looking to build a patio enclosure off the back of her home. The current deck doesn't have proper pier footings, so we will be deconstructing the current deck and building a new deck with proper pier footers, the same exact size, 8 feet by 15, and then installing a patio enclosure on top of that.
Okay. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
The appellant, the appellant, Kevin P. Farrell of Great Day Improvements, or Mark Dixon, representing the owner, Benay Dabney, is requesting the following waiver from the board to construct an approximately 120 square foot attached sunroom, category 2, to a legal non-conforming single-family residence with a non-conforming rear yard setback, 16 feet proposed, 35 feet required, a variance of 19 feet. The property is located on the east side of Lady K Court between Tyler Street and Idens Brook Court and south of Isleworth Point at 28416 Lady K Court, Sidwell Parcel Number 762418177041, Zoned R4 Single Family Residential. This appeal is to Section 5.193, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. The properties to the north and east are Zoned R4 Single Family Residential and are one- or two-story single-family residential homes or condominiums developed within the Villas of Pebble Creek subdivision. The properties to the south and west are Zoned R1 and R4 Single Family Residential and are one- or two-story single-family residential homes or condominiums ranging from approximately 1,900 square feet to 2,800 square feet in size, located within either the Villas of Pebble Creek subdivision or one of the adjacent Tyler Estates subdivisions. The subject property is a 2,000 square foot ranch-style residential property built in 1998, classified as residential condominium, and is Zoned R4 Single Family Residential. The subject property is located on the east side of Lady Kate Court between Tyler Street to the west and Idens Brook Court to the east and south of Isleworth Point. The subject property presently has two attached wooden decks at the rear of the structure, and the southernmost deck is approximately 13 feet from the property line. The proposed location for the attached sunroom category 2 appears to be where the existing northernmost deck is presently located.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
I do.
Okay. Any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
No, just the simple fact that this patio enclosure looked great off the back of the house. So it'll be a great addition.
Thank you. Will the city provide the recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration with the following condition. Appellant secures all required permits and final inspection approvals from the Southfield Building Department. Staff recommendation is based upon the following. The subject property already has two attached wooden decks at the rear of, of this residential structure, and the southernmost deck is approximately 13 feet from the property line, and the proposed location for the attached sunroom category 2 appears to be where the existing northernmost deck is presently located and already has legal, a legal non-conforming rear yard setback, and a variance approval based on plans submitted would still be approximately the same distance or further away from the rear property line, 16 feet, than the existing southernmost deck, 13 feet, and the proposed waiver would not create a substantial detriment to the public good and would not substantially impair the intent of the ordinance, and the proposed waiver appears to be consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and the regulations which apply to the zoning district, and the proposed waiver appears to be in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and should not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add before we open public comment?
No.
Okay, thank you. So we will open public comment on this case. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this case? Now is your opportunity. All right, seeing none, we'll, oh, oh, I'm sorry. Please, step forward. Nope, I need you to come all the way to the microphone so we can hear you, and please state your name and address for the record.
Okay. Hello, and thank you for having me here.
Real tight.
Okay. Hello, and thank you for, for having me here. My name is Ted F. Bogus. Me and my wife, Michelle Bogus, owns the property next door. So this is the first of us really hearing of it. We got a notice about it. So if the gentleman can offer us more details about how the finished product will look, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Sure, and I think the city can forward the slides as well.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, sir. You said you're the neighbor. Are you the neighbor to the, which direction? Next-door neighbor?
28442. We're to the north. So basically, we're going to be facing the sun porch. So for us, it's a little bit more special interest in how the finished product's going to look. I hope you could hear that. I'm sorry.
This is all that. I was really horrified that I don't have the interior.
Yeah. So, and then this is kind of the view that you'll see, and it'll be seen sort of kind of mesh like right into the house.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, it'll be really nice. And it looks like we'll be shingling it, too. That way it's kind of transparent with everything else that's currently there.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we'll be light as day, the bottom portion of it. So hopefully you like it.
Okay, well, yeah, most definitely. I have one more question.
Yep.
How much will this add to the property value of our neighbor's house?
So unfortunately, yeah, we're not assessors. So unfortunately, I don't think we can identify that for you, but...
Yes, ma'am. I have a two-fold concern is how much the property value is going to go up.
Okay.
And basically, we planned on doing some improvements to our property, and we just want to really find out how much liberties are we going to have from now on if this area is going to be rezoned, that's all. But yeah, I like the renderings. I think me and my wife would be satisfied with it.
Okay.
But there's a lot of unforeseen things that we're a little concerned about.
Understood. Property taxes are definitely a concern.
Yes.
Understood. Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate your comments.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question for you.
No problem.
Sure.
Overall, did he say he, he approves it or accepts it?
Yeah, he said he liked it. I'm, I'm.
Is that correct, sir? You're, do not oppose the waiver? So you're, so, yeah.
He was more concerned with the property value.
I understand. Overall, you said you, you accept it?
Yes, I'm not submitting a formal disapproval or unapproval of this. I just want to know more information about it so I can endorse, because basically, I just met my neighbor last year. So, I mean, for a while, we weren't even speaking, and there's no animus or anything. It's just that, like, you know, no one came to us, like the prior case, to actually speak to us in anything. This is just happening. So due to all the rules in our community, we just want to make sure that we always try to be conformed to the rules. We've actually, just full disclosure, we've got notices about our property. So, because I'm just exhibiting the same concern that's been put forth on my property onto our neighbor. So this is no animus against you or the neighbor. We just want to be well informed, because, like, we've learned the rules the hard way. So we're trying to figure out what is her intent and what's the effect going to be in the future, that's all.
Okay.
Okay, but yeah, but this was not a proposal. We just wanted to know more information, that's all.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this case? No, I'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Jenkins, how do you feel?
There's no public comment, right?
Nope, we're done.
Oh, the appellate, Kevin P. Farrell.
No, no, do you, do you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Do you support the waiver or?
Oh, that's what you asked?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, I thought you, okay.
Sorry.
I support it.
Okay. Mr. Friedman?
I have no issues with it. As I've said a whole bunch of times, if, I believe, a side yard setback, you know, would be the right of the neighbor to oppose, and it doesn't seem to be opposing it, so I'm fine with it.
Okay. Mr. Rogers?
No, I think it's a good way to repurpose that other deck. And having driven around that area, it seems like there was one gentleman had a big deck with a gazebo attached and stuff like that. So it's a very private area, so, you know, there's trees and it's, it's, it's all good for me.
Okay. I, yeah, I think it's a nice addition. Unfortunately, I don't know what the impact will be to the value of the home. I'm sure there will be some impact.
He might, he might want one after it's done, so who knows?
So, um, but let's see. So, Mr. Jenkins, will you make a motion on this case?
Okay. Appellate Kevin P. Farrell of Great Day Improvements LLC, representing the owner, Benay Dabney, is requesting the following waiver from the board to construct an approximately 120 square feet attached sunroom, in parentheses, category 2, to a legal non-conforming single-family residence with a non-conforming rear yard setback, 16 feet proposed, 35 feet required, a variance of 19 feet. The property is located on the east side of Lady K Court between Tyler Street and Idens Brook Court and south of Islesworth Point at 24, 28416 Lady K Court, Sidwell Parcel Number 76-24-18-177-041, Zoned R4 Single Family Residential. This appeal is to Section 5.193, Article 22, Chapter 45 of Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. Staff recommendation is favorable consideration with the following conditions. Appellant secures all required permits. You got, you got to require all permits, okay?
Hundred percent, yep.
Okay. And final inspection approvals from the Southfield Building Department. Staff recommendation is based on the following. The subject property already has two attached wooden decks at the rear of this residential structure, and the southernmost deck is approximately 13 feet from the property line, and the proposed location for the attached sunroom category 2 appears to be where the existing northernmost deck is presently located and already has a legal non-conforming rear yard setback, and a variance approval based on the plans submitted would still be approximately the same distance or further away from the rear property line, 16 feet, than the existing south, southernmost deck, 13 feet, and the property waiver would not create a substantial detriment to the public good and would not substantially impair the intent of the ordinance, and the property waiver appears to be consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and the regulations which apply to the zoning district, and the proposed waiver appears to be in keeping with the character and surrounding area and should not have an adverse, adverse, adverse or detrimental effect upon the adjacent or surrounding properties.
Great, thank you. Can I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your request is granted. Again, just work with the city on your permits.
Have a good evening.
Will the city call the next case, please?
Case number 25-30. The appellant, Carlos Hamilton, property owner, is requesting the following waiver from the board to construct an approximately 589 square foot addition to an existing single-family residential structure with approximately 18 feet 5 inches front yard setback proposed, a minimum front yard setback of 40 feet required, a variance of 21 feet 7 inches. The property is located on the east side of Lasser Road between Nine Mile Road and Ten Mile Road at 24200 Lasser Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 2427101047, Zoned R2 Single Family Residential. This appeal is to Section 5.193, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Great, thank you. Hi, good evening.
Good evening. How are you guys?
Good, good. If you could, state your name, each state your name and address for the record, please.
Carlos Hamilton, 24200 Lasser Road, Southfield, Michigan, 48033.
Thank you.
Alexandra Hamilton, 24200 Lasser Road, Southfield, Michigan, 48033.
Perfect, thank you. And then could one of you describe to us what you're asking for and why?
A big, beautiful closet.
You might even say that louder. Okay. Do you want to describe it any more than that?
It's a big box that, that I need for a closet. It's a beautiful home that we have brought up. We've made so many improvements to not just the home, but the land itself. We're in a unique situation. We're on like almost 10 acres. I didn't even know Southfield had properties like that. We really don't have neighbors. There's another home on the property, but it's ours. Our neighbors is a condo, townhome that's next to us, the fire department across the street. It's kind of a mix of commercial and residential. We planted about 300 trees over the last three years to block off the house from Lasser because it was just so open when we got it. So we've, we've done a lot of improvements, and this is kind of like the last piece that I personally need for this home.
Understood. Okay. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
The appellant, Carlos Hamilton, property owner, is requesting the following waiver from the board to construct an approximately 589 square foot addition to an existing single-family residential structure with approximately 18 feet 5 inches front yard setback proposed, a minimum front yard setback of 40 feet required, a variance of 21 feet 7 inches. The property is located on the east side of Lasser Road between Nine Mile Road and Ten Mile Road at 24200 Lasser Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 2427101047, Zoned R2 Single Family Residential. This appeal is to Section 5.193, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. The properties to the north are Zoned R2 Single Family and is the present location of Marthoma Church. There is also an existing log cabin structure located along the east side of Lasser Road in this area. The properties to the east are Zoned R2 and are developed with one or two-story, single-family homes within the supervisor's plat of McClellan's College View subdivision accessible from 10 Mile Road at Lois Lane. The properties to the south are Zoned R2 Single Family Residential or RM, Multiple Family Low Rise. There is an existing daycare center within the R2 zone area. And the RM zone area is the location of the River Crossing Condominiums complex. The properties to the west are Zoned OS, Office Service. Southfield A&amp;T High School and Southfield Fire Station 5 and Training Center are located within the OS zone. The subject property is Zoned R2 Single Family Residential. There is an existing 3,170 square foot ranch-style home with an attached garage built in 1938 on an approximately 3.74 acres lot. There is an addition to the existing home already under construction at this location. A building permit was applied for after the property owner was advised that a building permit is required for the addition to this home. The existing home front yard appears to face southwest. And the proposed addition appears to be located near the southernmost portion, southeast corner, approximately 18 feet 5 inches from the shared access road, the access road to the previously mentioned daycare center. There is an existing detached garage-like structure approximately 206 feet from Lasser Road right-of-way. And the existing home is more than 220 feet away from Lasser Road.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
No, just that that closet space is needed. That's actually, we have no other closet, that's all that.
Okay, we cannot hear you?
There is no other room for clothing.
I didn't hear what you said.
Yeah, you're going to need to speak one more time right into the mic.
There's pretty much no other actual room to put clothing based on how the house was designed, how the house was designed and made. So we definitely need that. We definitely need that.
Okay. So will the city provide the recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is favorable consideration with the following condition. Appellant secures all required permits and final inspection approvals from the Southfield Building Department. Staff recommendation is faced upon the following. The proposed waiver would not create a substantial detriment to the public good and would not substantially impair the intent of the ordinance. And the proposed waiver appears to be consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and the regulations which apply to the zoning district. And the proposed waiver appears to be in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and should not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add before we open public comment?
We have been in Southfield for about five years now and absolutely love. And I'm not just saying that. I absolutely mean it. We've had the fire department stop by. We've had police officers stop by. We've had the water. Because everyone pretty much have seen us over the years planting all these huge evergreen trees. And we're curious as to what we were doing. And everyone seems to love it. Even the people in the townhomes stop by and are just in awe. And they even have bets going as to what we're building next. So we have really tried to put all we have into this property, not just the home. And the neighborhood seems to love it. Even the building inspectors.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. So let's open public comment on this case. If you are here to speak to this case, now would be your opportunity to step forward. I don't want to take too little time this time. Okay. I don't see anybody, so we're going to close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Friedman?
My question is for the city. Why, the address is on Lasser Road. Why does this need a front yard setback to the side of the house? Shouldn't it be, this should be fine. I don't see that this needs a waiver at all. I mean a...
Sorry, I can't hear what you're saying. About the set yard to the front?
The address, the address of the house is on Lasser Road.
That's affirmative.
Quite a bit further than 40 feet from Lasser Road.
Agreed.
So why does this need a waiver at all?
I'm processing the paperwork that was submitted to me for zoning board of appeals.
Okay, I have no issues with the waiver. I just don't see that it's necessary.
Okay. Mr. Jenkins?
I highly like what you're doing based on, you know, I've seen what's going on over there, okay? And I approve and recommend this as approval.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers?
All I say is keep going.
It's a very beautiful property. It feels like you've been transported into like a garden setting, so it's lovely.
Exactly.
Yeah, good. We all want to find that kind of peace at home, right?
Thank you.
I came from the, we came from Gross Point just to come all the way up here because we were looking for some property and some land. And she found it. And so she says you have work to do. So I've been working for the last five years putting this together. So it's an honor to be here. And then Keith Butler's my pastor, so I pretty much, I've been there 30 years, so.
Excellent.
I'm around the corner.
Great. All right, so will you make a motion, please?
Sure. In regard to the appellant, Carlos Hamilton, requests for a waiver from the board to construct a 589 square foot addition to an existing single-family residential structure with approximately 18-foot 5-inch front yard setback. Proposed a minimum front yard setback of 40 feet required. Property is located on the east side of Lasser Road between Nine Mile and 10 Mile Road at 24200 Lasser Road, Sidwell Parcel 2427101047, Zoned R2 Single Family Residence. I move that we approve the waiver with the condition that the appellant secure all the required permits for the reasons that the staff laid out in their recommendation.
Okay. Can I have a second, please?
One second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Your request is granted. Continue your incredible improvements of your home.
Can I ask you guys, are there three, actually three other properties like ours in the area?
Are there any other properties like yours in the city?
We were told there's five, we're at the fifth properties in Southfield that's like this. Because I was, I had no clue Southfield had properties like this. And I think the building inspector told us it's like five in total that are kind of hidden. And you don't know until you drive in them.
Yeah, there's a lot of surprising property in Southfield, so.
Yes.
Yeah, definitely, especially with the large acreage you have.
Yes.
Yeah. But we don't see too many of them. Again, as Mr. Friedman pointed out, usually we're looking at tighter, built-out neighborhoods where setbacks are tighter, so, yeah. Well, thank you.
No problem. Every summer we're out. I'm always trying to plant more trees. So I tell, I tell all the officers, the fire department, everybody, just honk. Because I'm always outside watering.
Yeah, we might need to stop by and see that closet, though.
Please do.
All right, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Will the city call the next case, please?
Case number 25-19. The appellant, Kevin Carruthers, Fast Signs, representing the Excelsior Riverwood Research Center property manager, Stephen Postelnick, is requesting the following waiver from the board. A waiver for one wall sign not facing a major thoroughfare frontage proposed. Zero wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare frontage permitted. The property is located on the south side of 10 Mile Road between Telegraph Road and Beach Road at 24471 10 Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 762429201006, Zoned OS Office Service District. This appeal is to Chapter 99, Article 7, Section 8.55, Part 1, more commonly known as the sign ordinance.
Thank you. Hi, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Carruthers, Fast Signs, 11198 Farmington Road, Leboni, Michigan, 48150.
Okay. Can you step just a little bit closer to the microphone for us?
I can.
And can you describe to us what you're asking for and why, please?
So I'm requesting to put up a sign for a print and marketing company to have some visual communication above their building. Currently, it is Zoned OS, and the building already has two signs on it, so we would need a variance for that. They've been in the building, I would say, for about six or seven months now. As a visual communications company, I think it's very important to have some visual communications outside as well. However, I think that's set back about 300 or 400 feet from a major thoroughfare and not visible from the thoroughfare. So it's only people within the parking lot.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
The appellant, Kevin Carruthers, Fast Signs, representing the Excelsior Riverwood Research Center property manager, Stephen Postelnick, is requesting the following waiver from the board. A waiver for a wall sign not facing a major thoroughfare frontage. One wall sign not facing a major thoroughfare proposed, zero permitted. The property is located on the south side of 10 Mile Road between Telegraph Road and Beach Road at 24471 10 Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 762429201006, Zoned OS Office Service District. This appeal is to Chapter 99, Article 7, Section 8.55, Part 1A, more commonly known as the sign ordinance. The properties to the north are Zoned B2, Planned Business, and B3, General Business. There are existing single-story businesses within these zones, including a standalone small banquet hall as well as a single-story multi-tenant building which includes a carryout pizzeria, flower shop, insurance business, and a fresh seafood and chicken store. The properties to the south are Zoned RE, Single Family Residential, and is the location of the already-developed Kinsels Acres subdivision consisting of single-story residential homes with mostly attached garages. Some homes have detached garages. The properties to the east are Zoned OS, Office Service District, and RE, Single Family Residential. The OS zoned area is the location of a single-story doctor's office. And the RE zoned area is part of the previously-mentioned Kinsels Acres subdivision. The properties to the west are Zoned RM, Multiple Family Low Rise, and is the location of the Autumn Ridge Condominiums complex. The subject property is an existing tenant space within an existing single-story office building built in 1987. It is approximately 67,800 square feet in size and part of the Riverwood Research Center and located on the south side of 10 Mile Road between Telegraph Road and Beach Road at 24471 10 Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 762429201006, Zoned OS Office Service District. The frontage along the major thoroughfare 10 Mile Road of this multi-tenant, multi-addressed building is approximately 160 linear feet. There's an existing wall sign for an existing tenant located at the east end of this major thoroughfare frontage. The subject property tenant space is located at the east side of this office building and is not facing a major thoroughfare frontage. The frontage along the east side of this tenant space is more than 100 linear feet, and the entire east frontage is more than 400 linear feet. The building frontage height is approximately 18 feet. The sign area of the proposed wall sign is approximately 34.25 square feet.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
I agree with those except for the northern facade does now have two signs. You guys approved one for the northern facade, I think about two months ago.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Will the city give the recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration with the following condition. The appellant secures all the required permits and inspections received final approval from the City of Southfield Building Department. This recommendation is based upon the following. Due to extraordinary or exceptional conditions of the property on which the sign is proposed and the strict application of the regulations would result in practical difficulties to or undue hardship upon the owner of such property. Provided such relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of this chapter. And that the proposed sign is consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter and the regulations which apply to the zoning district. And that the proposed sign is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and should not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties. And that the proposed sign will not interfere with, excuse me, or be objectionable from the standpoint of traffic safety. And the proposed sign would improve building tenant identification visibility and allow customers to locate the business entrance before driving past the entrance. And this proposed wall sign location is the only practical location available due to the business entrance being located along the east side of this building. It does not face north towards the major thoroughfare.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add before we open public comment?
No, thank you.
We are going to open public comment on this case. If you are here to speak to this case, now is your opportunity. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment, turn it over to the board. Mr. Rogers?
I have no problem with it. I see the problem over there. They have a lot of tenants facing on the side yard there. And I guess they don't want to have people getting out of their car and figuring out which door to go into. So it makes sense.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Friedman?
I don't have any issues with it. I think every tenant in that building should probably have a sign of their door. So I'd approve it.
I agree. Okay. Mr. Jenkins, your thoughts on this case?
I have no problem with it. I think I'm familiar with the area, so I'm, you know, I'm well acquainted with what's going on. Okay.
Sounds good. Yeah, I agree. I mean, thank you for pointing out that we did just recently approve a sign. I don't know how many more tenants you need to like knock on their door and figure out that we need these waivers for.
I'll wait for Steve to do that for me.
So let's see, Mr. Friedman, will you make a motion for us?
Sure. What was this, 25?
19, yep.
Okay, with regard to the appellant, Kevin Carruthers of Fast Signs, representing Excelsior Riverwood Research Center and the manager, Stephen Postelnick, seeking a waiver for a wall sign not facing a major thoroughfare frontage. One wall sign proposed, zero permitted. The property is located on the south side of 10 Mile Road between Telegraph Road and Beach Road at 24471 10 Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel 762429201006, Zoned OS Office Service District. I move that we approve the waiver with the condition that the appellant secures all the required permits for the reasons stated by the city in their recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your request is granted.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Will the city call the next case, please?
Case number 25-26. The appellant, Allied Signs, representing the owner, Dean Colores, President of Sundance Inc., is requesting the following waiver from the board. A waiver for an approximately 9.96 square foot additional Taco Bell Letters sign for a total of two wall signs per major thoroughfare frontage proposed. One wall sign per major thoroughfare frontage permitted, a variance of one wall sign. The property is located on the south side of 12 Mile Road between Telegraph Road and Lockdale Street at 24705 West 12 Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 762417201074, Zoned B3, General Business District. This appeal is to Chapter 99, Article 11, Section 8.60, Part 2A, Sub I, more commonly known as the sign ordinance.
Thank you. Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Bob Mancorno with Allied Signs. Address is 33650 Giftos Drive, Clinton Township. Here on behalf of Taco Bell, located at 24705 West 12 Mile, seeking a variance for a second wall sign. With the second wall sign, the Taco Bell Letters, we are trying to be consistent with national and local branding of other Taco Bell locations. With the additional square footage with the second wall sign, we are well under the 70 square foot allowed by ordinance. So our request is pretty much just to have a second wall sign for consistency of national branding.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
The appellant, Allied Signs, representing the owner, Dean Colores, President of Sundance Inc., is requesting the following waiver from the board. A waiver for an approximately 9.96 square foot additional Taco Bell Letters sign for a total of two wall signs per major thoroughfare frontage proposed. One wall sign permitted per major thoroughfare frontage, a variance of one wall sign. The property is located on the south side of 12 Mile Road between Telegraph Road and Lockdale Street at 24705 West 12 Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 762417201074, Zoned B3, General Business District. This appeal is to Chapter 99, Article 11, Section 8.60, 2A, Sub I, more commonly known as the sign ordinance. The property to the north is Zoned RM, Multiple Family Low Rise, and is the present location of the Parkon 12 Apartments North, formerly the Pointer Woods Apartments. The property to the south is Zoned OS, Office Service, and is the present location of a multi-story office building. The properties to the east are Zoned B3, General Business, and the present locations of several businesses, including an automotive... businesses, including an automotive body repair shop, Tesla, a single-story multi-tenant outlot building with a sandwich shop and convenience store and a BP fueling station. The property to the west is Zoned RC Regional Center and is the present location of the Galleria Office Center Complex. The subject property is an existing 2,723 square foot Taco Bell restaurant built in 2013 and is presently under renovation via permit, PB 25-0865. The linear feet for this Taco Bell building frontage is approximately 35 feet. The total square footage area for both signs is approximately 23.48 square feet.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes, I do.
Okay, any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Will the city provide their recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration with the following condition: The appellant secures all required permits and inspections received final approval from the City of Southfield Building Department. This recommendation is based upon the following: Due to extraordinary or exceptional conditions of the property on which the sign is proposed, and the strict application of the regulations would result in practical difficulties to or undue hardship upon the owner of such property, provided such relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of this chapter, and that the proposed sign is consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter and the regulations which apply to the zoning district, and that the proposed sign is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and should not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties, and that the proposed sign will not interfere with or be objectionable from the standpoint of traffic safety, and the proposed sign would improve building tenant identification visibility before passing the parking lot entrance, which is located at the east side of the end of the property along the south side of Ten Mile Road.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add before we open public comment?
No.
Okay, thank you. We will open public comment on this case. If you are here to speak to this case, now is your opportunity to come forward. Okay, seeing none, close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Rogers?
I have no problem with it. I think you have to have some wording to describe the bell, so, and given the fact that it's way under the square footage and the branding, it's all good by me.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Friedman?
I have no issues with it.
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins?
I have no issues with it.
Okay, I agree. Again, we are generally looking for the square footage to be, you know, at or less, and I think this is a minor second wall sign request, so. Mr. Jenkins, do you want to make a motion for us?
Case number 25-26, the appellant, Allied Signs, representing the owner, Dean Colores, President of Sundance Incorporated, is requesting the following waiver from the board: A waiver for approximately 9.9 square feet additional Taco Bell letters sign for a total of two wall signs per major thoroughfare frontage proposed; one wall sign permitted per major thoroughfare frontage; a variance of one wall sign. The property is located on the south side of 12 Mile Road between Telegraph Road and Lockdale Street at 24705 West 12 Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel number 76-24-17-201-074, Zoned B3 General Business District. This appeal is to Chapter 99, Article, Section 8.60, 2A, I, more commonly known as sign ordinance. Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration for the following, and our recommendation is the same: The appellant secures all the required permits, inspections received final approval from the City of Southfield Building Department. That is a must, okay? The recommendation is based on the following: Due to extraordinary or exceptional conditions of the property on which the sign is proposed, and the strict application of the regulations would result in practical difficulties to or undue hardship upon the owner of such property, provided such relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of this chapter, and that the proposed sign is consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter and the regulations which apply to this zoning district. That the proposed sign is keeping with the character of the surrounding areas and has no adverse effect on the areas. The proposed sign will not interfere with or objectionable from the standpoint of the ordinance. The proposed sign will improve the building and tenant identification and visibility before the passing of the lot entrance, which is located on the east side and property along the south side of Ten Mile Road.
Okay, thank you. Just one correction, it's actually a 12-mile road, so I'm not sure why that says 10 miles, so just correct that.
Oh.
It says 10, it does say 10, you're correct. It just shouldn't be 12.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I just read wrong.
You're correct, you're right, you did. Can I have a second to that motion, please?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your request is granted. Work with the building department on your committee. Thank you very much. Will the city call the next case, please?
Case number 25-29. The appellants, Nico Gatzeros and Radiant Sign Company representative Paul Winestock, representing Maria Gatzeros, owner of International Marketplace Inc., are requesting the following waivers from the board: To replace an existing ground support sign with an approximately 50.5 square foot in area and 11.25 high electronic changeable copy sign not facing a major thoroughfare proposed; zero permitted, and to install an additional, total of two, new garden ground sign that which is facing a major thoroughfare, approximately 88.85 square feet in size and 5 feet 8 inches in height proposed. The one garden ground sign shall not exceed a height of 5 feet permitted; a variance of 8 inches in height. The property is located on the northeast side of Northwestern Highway between Franklin Road and Rosemont Drive at 29244 Northwestern Highway, Sidwell Parcel number 762407326030, Zoned B3 General Business District, which is a change to the legal notice. This appeal is to Article 11, Section 8.593, ABC, Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Hi, good evening.
Hello.
If you could speak right into the microphone, otherwise we won't be able to hear you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. If you could give us your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, my name is Nico Gatzeros, 5 Lake Court, Gross Point, Michigan, 48230. And I'm Maria Gatzeros-Sun, representing International Marketplace for the two signs that we're hoping to go for today.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
If you're going to speak, I'd also like you to introduce yourself, please.
Paul Winestock from Radiant Sign Company, 14500 Talbot Oak Park.
Great, thank you very much. And then if you could describe to us what you're asking for and why, please?
We are asking for two things. We're asking for a sign, the Fish Bones sign that you can see on the photograph there. We've been at Fish Bones in Southfield since 1997, and in today's world, it is the worst conditions in the restaurant industry you could possibly dream. It is as bad as it's ever been, and my mother's been doing this since she was a little girl, and she is still doing it, and 82 years old, I can't even believe it. And she still goes to work every day. And I had somebody come up to me, and I told them we got a Fish Bones in Southfield, and they said, "I've lived there for 20 years, and I've never even seen a sign."
Wow.
And I said, "Wow." And they said, "I drive by that place all the time, and, you know, it's just, everything's way back. It's just way back, and we got to get something more towards the front." So, you know, the Fish Bones sign would just let people know that we're even there at all, number one. And when you're coming northbound on the lodge or on Northwestern Highway, and the Friedman Building's on the right-hand side there, you got trees. By the time you even get past the trees, you're already blowing past our, blowing past our whole business, and you're not going to get in the left lane, U-turn, and U-turn, and U-turn to come back around. So, we would just want to give a little more notoriety with regards to that. And then with regards to the electronic copy sign, we had a changeable copy sign that you would have at Fish Bones in St. Clair Shores, and we've had it there for almost 20 years, where you would lift up the plastic lid, change the letters, and go in and out of there. And we literally took that down almost a year ago because of new technologies and stuff like that, and it was just getting tired of looking. And we did it over there, and we did a mock-up of what it looked like. It's almost identical to the mock-up that you guys see. We've gotten so many compliments on the sign, and, you know, we just do a little bit of advertising on it, and, you know, it's nothing moving, it's just static, it's monochrome, if you needed monochrome. We can abide by any of these things, but it's for if somebody's having a birthday party, happy birthday to that person, you know, or an anniversary, the bands that are playing there on the weekends, because we have live music there on the weekends, and any food features. So, as people are driving by, they'll catch it, they might catch that, you know, and there's so many signs in the world. This thing's kind of, it's nice-looking. It's not obtrusive, it's not gaudy, it's, you know, you can dim it way down, you know, you can make it any colors you like, and we've got a graphics design. And then we would make it real slick and, you know, with the landscape design, hide any bolsters or anything like that. It'd look super professional. And I've got, I actually did a video for you, in case you wanted to see a video of vehicles driving by it, you know, very similar to Northwestern Highway, and it's, you know, it's not anything that anybody's, like, focusing on for so long, like, oh, wow, it's, you know, three, four-word things, you know, like, join us tonight for lobsters or whatever, you know, whatever it might be, but very simple and quick, and that's it. And, you know, probably put, I know they can only change so many times a minute or what have you. Whatever the rules are, we'll stick to the rules, you know.
Okay.
But we'd really appreciate it. It is treacherous in the restaurant business right now. We're down 20%, and I hate to say that, my mom's going to kick my butt for saying it. We're down 20% in one single year in five restaurants, and they're all over southeastern Michigan, and it's tragic. So, we're trying our best to just increase sales, and, you know, we've got a great product, we're proud of our staff, we're proud of our team, and the location, we love being here, we don't want to leave. We just invested a million dollars in Fish Bones, not even 2019. A new roof, new bar, underground plumbing, all kinds of improvements in the restrooms and everything. We don't plan on leaving, we want to stay, we love it here, love the community.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
The appellants, Nico Gatzeros and Radiant Sign Company representative Paul Winestock, representing Maria Gatzeros, owner of International Marketplace Inc., are requesting the following waivers from the board: To replace an existing ground support sign with an approximately 50.5 square foot in area and 11.25 high electronic changeable copy sign not facing a major thoroughfare proposed; zero permitted, and to install an additional, total of two, new garden ground sign that which is facing a major thoroughfare, approximately 88.85 square feet in size and 5 feet 8 inches in height proposed. One garden ground sign shall not exceed a height of 5 feet permitted; a variance of 8 inches in height. The property is located on the northeast side of Northwestern Highway between Franklin Road and Rosemont Drive at 29244 Northwestern Highway, Sidwell Parcel number 762407326030, Zoned B3 General Business. This appeal is to Article 11, Section 8.593, ABC, Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance. The properties to the south, east, and west are Zoned B3 General Business and include a variety of businesses, including a dry cleaner, bar and grill, nail salon, fueling station BP, two or more multi-story office medical buildings, and a smoke tobacco store. The properties to the north are Zoned R2 Single Family Residential and B3 General Business and include the Chelsea Crossing condos accessible from 12 Mile Road and the Franklin Racquetball Club accessible from Northwestern Highway. The subject property is an existing single-story restaurant built in 1980, approximately 12,428 square feet, located on the northeast side of Northwestern Highway. There is an existing ground support sign near the main access lane along Northwestern Highway.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
I do.
Okay, any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
No, thanks.
Okay. Will the city read their recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is two parts. Part one, denial to replace an existing ground support sign with an approximately 50.5 square foot in area and 11.25 high electronic changeable copy sign not facing a major thoroughfare; one proposed, zero permitted. Staff recommendation for denial is based upon the following: There do not appear to be any extraordinary or exceptional conditions of the property on which the sign is proposed, and the strict application of the regulations would not result in practical difficulties to or undue hardship upon the owner of such property, and allowing a variance for an electronic changeable copy sign not facing a major thoroughfare and facing oncoming traffic could cause substantial detriment to the public good and could substantially impair the intent and purpose of this chapter, and that the proposed sign is not consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter and the regulations which apply to the zoning district, and that the proposed sign would not be in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and could have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties, and that the proposed sign could interfere with and/or be objectionable from the standpoint of traffic safety. Staff recommendation for the second part is favorable consideration to install a new garden ground sign, total of one, that which is facing a major thoroughfare, approximately 88.85 square feet in size and 5 feet 8 inches in height proposed. The one garden ground sign shall not exceed a height of 5 feet permitted; a variance of 8 inches in height, with the following condition: The appellant secures all the required permits and inspections received final approval from the City of Southfield Building Department. This recommendation is based upon the following: Garden ground signs may replace garden ground support signs provided the following conditions are met: Each development may have only one garden ground sign per major thoroughfare frontage; the total sign area of all permitted garden ground signs shall not exceed 100 square feet. Due to extraordinary or exceptional conditions of the property on which the sign is proposed, and the strict application of the regulations would result in practical difficulties to or undue hardship upon the owner of such property, provided such relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of this chapter, and that the proposed sign is consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter and the regulations which apply to the zoning district, and that the proposed sign is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and should not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties, and that the proposed sign will not interfere with or be objectionable from the standpoint of traffic safety.
Okay, thank you. Anything you'd like to add?
I'd love to show you the video of cars driving by in St. Clair Shores, if you'd like to see it. I have it on my phone, it's pretty easy, and it's really quick, and you can see how nice that sign looks. It's not gaudy, it totally goes with the area, it'll enhance the area.
Sure.
It'll make it look nicer. I'd love to show it to you, thank you. Appreciate this opportunity, everybody. I know who you are. I'm over here at St. Clair Shores, and I just kind of wanted to show you the electronic sign. The one we have over here, it's beautiful, and it's right off the road, it's static, we're just using it for advertising, because business is so tough right now. Any advertising or any way to draw people in is fantastic. It's not obtrusive at all. I actually get a lot of phone calls, people saying how beautiful it is, how nice it is. We have different events when people have anniversaries or weddings and stuff like that. It's, uh, it's not obtrusive at all. It actually enhances the area, it looks really nice. And, you know, there's signs everywhere in the world, this one just happens to be electronic instead of a changeable copy sign, which means they have their, you know, the letters. So, it's beautiful, and it gets a point across, it's definitely helping with business, because business is so bad right now, it's terrible, and we're trying to, trying to get a little action in the restaurant industry all over the place, not just Mission Valley, the entire industry is devastated right now. So, I need anything else? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you want to add before we open public comment?
Nope, that'll be so helpful. It's just amazing, the little things, right? They all add up to big movement in the restaurant industry, so any way to let people know we're alive, we'd love it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
So, we will open public comment on this case. If there's anyone here to speak to this case, now is your opportunity. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Rogers?
I think this, Fish Bones is unique, Northwestern, a lot of the restaurants are in strip malls, and they're defined, their sign is just defined by knowing the strip mall, Sunset Plaza, whatever it's called. Their, in my opinion, their property's large enough to hold Their, in my opinion, their property is large enough to hold the signage that they're proposing. First of all, the additional ground sign in front. But I don't think the, uh, the sign that they want to modify and change is, has, uh, would be detrimental in any way. In fact, I, I think they kind of need both of them as a pair. I know you do have a sign saying Fishbones on the awning, which I don't see on this picture, but the setback on the restaurant is significant. And I'm, I would approve both, uh, both waivers that are being asked for.
Okay. Mr. Jenkins?
Can I make a comment? Okay, let me just say, they do sit with that. And Fishbone at one time was the best, one of the best restaurants in the metropolitan area, not just, not just in Southfield. When they moved to Southfield, I was highly favorable for them. And now I've been in there and the business is down, okay?
Yes, sir.
And I know your, I know Maria and I know your, you know, I know the family. And I, whatever they, this is something that would help them improve their business and I don't think it's, it's an ordinance to the community. I would highly recommend that this be accepted, okay, as a new sign that be favorable to our community as well, okay? And bring our business, okay?
Yes, sir. Appreciate it.
Bring your business, I mean.
I appreciate that, sir. Just so you know, the first week that we put that sign in, we were seeing significant increases in business, just significant. And I'm not lying. We were getting phone calls. People are like, your sign is dynamite. It's dynamite. So, and we can do, you know, we could even share it with, share it with the city if we need to, right?
Mr. Friedman?
I have a question for the, about the staff recommendation. The discussion of the, the staff would approve the second garden grounds, garden grounds, the additional sign, if even with them leaving up the first sign. You're opposing the, just the electronic status of the, of the electronic?
The electronic changeable copy portion of it, that is correct.
So if they would put a similar sign to the electronic changeable copy, but with the same size, having two signs there would be fine with the, with the status?
Well, what, what the ordinance says is that they're allowed to replace the existing ground support with a garden ground.
I understand that, but they're proposing replacing the existing sign with a garden ground and then adding the electronic changeable copy sign?
That's my understanding.
Right. So if the electronic changeable copy sign was not an electronic changeable copy sign, but was a second sign that was not electronically changeable?
We would have a different variance.
I understand it would need a variance. Would the staff be recommending approval of that second sign? Is it just the electronic changeable nature of that second sign that the city is opposed, that the city?
So if I'm, if I'm hearing the board correctly, the suggestion is that it will be electronic but not changeable copy?
No. So his question is, your denial, is it based on the fact that it's an electronic changeable copy? If it was a static sign, would you support it?
It would have to be submitted and then I would go through my findings, just like I did this time, yeah.
I would be fine with both sides.
Okay.
You'd be fine, you'd be fine with what now?
Both sides that they're proposing.
Me too.
So I agree, but I agree based on Mr. Rogers' statement that this is a large property that sits far back from the road that is a single-building restaurant. Because what I'm going to tell you, what I will not support is every other strip mall on Northwestern coming here and asking for a variable, what is it called? Changeable variable sign, whatever that is. So I just want to like state that on the record, that my support is based solely on the fact that it is a individual standing restaurant, and I would not support changeable copy signs up and down Northwestern on every other plaza. So, um, any other discussion?
So you bottom line, your bottom line is what?
I support this waiver, but I won't support future waivers.
Okay, I get that. I just want to make sure it's clear.
Just to confirm, yes, the purpose of the denial is specifically about the electronic changeable copy not allowed.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on the board? No? Who wants to make the motion? You want to do it? Great, thank you.
A second.
I'll include your specific.
I appreciate it.
I approve this, to have the sign as, as requested.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The appellant, Ms. Gatzeros of Radiant Sign Company, and Radiant Sign Company representative Paul Winestock, representing Maria Gatzeros, owner of International Marketplace Incorporated, requesting the following waivers from the board. To replace an existing grounds support sign with an approximately 50.5 square foot area and 11 and a quarter foot high electronic changeable copy sign not facing a major thoroughfare. One proposed, zero permitted, and to install an additional, for a total of two, new garden and ground sign that facing a major thoroughfare of approximately 88.85 square feet in size and 5 feet 8 inches in height proposed. I approve that, I, I move that we approve both of the waivers for, for the reasons that, that with regard to the garden ground sign, there's not, uh, there's not detrimental to the sign ordinance. It is consistent, it's paired with the intent of this chapter. And with regard to the changeables, to the electronic changeable copy sign, that this, the unique feature of the setback of this property makes a sign such as this necessary.
Can we also add that, as proposed, that it would be static and not actively moving?
With the condition, with the condition that the electronic sign is, is static and does not, does not change more than, is there some sort of periodicity?
There's a, there's an ordinance for how many times it can change it per minute.
That it complies with the ordinance with regard to the change, changeable nature of the sign.
Nice job. Can I have a second?
It's a lot of, lot of.
Can I have a second?
Second.
I'm second or third.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, your request is granted. You will still need to work with the building department on all your permits, but good luck.
Thank you so much.
I will let my husband know that you have music on the weekends and we will be in soon.
Live music every Saturday.
Not yet.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
No, no, sir.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Jenkins. Thanks, everybody.
Okay. I think we have one more case.
How much am I, two?
Did I pack them up?
No, you got one. Did I not sign one? No? I'll, I'll figure it out.
Okay. All right. Last case, I think. 2528, well, did he call the last case?
Good evening, board members. This is case 2528. The appellant, Deborah Eagle, representing Eagle Landscaping and Supply Company owner, is requesting the following variances from the board. Section 5.37-1C2B, a waiver from the minimum front yard setback for fences, 60 feet required, 1 foot 5 inch proposed along West 8 Mile Road. And section 5.187, a waiver from the I-1 building line. No building structures, parking, or open storage is permitted nearer than 60 feet from the street right-of-way line required. And parking in front of the 60 feet proposed along West 8 Mile right-of-way proposed. The property is located on the north side of West 8 Mile Road, west of Loser at 22108 West 8 Mile Road. Sidwell parcel number 2433476060, zoned I-1 industrial. This appeals to sections 5169, 5170, and 5195, Article 4, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Great, thank you. Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for your patience.
No problem. Thanks for waiting for us. My name is Chad Holdup with the Umlar Group. My address is 49287 West Road, Wixom, Michigan. I'm here on behalf of Debbie and Ron Eagle. I'm the civil engineer on the project. That's correct. We're asking two waivers today. One of them is for the fence in the front yard based on the setback, and the other one is for the parking. So what they're proposing here is very consistent with the rest of their property. Actually, to the west and then also on Loser, you'll see the exact same fencing. It's actually like a beautiful wrought iron fence with very nice gates that read Eagle Landscaping. They have very nice landscaping that's consistent with the fencing. And in front of the building here, we are proposing parking. Both of these drive aisles are going to be gated, and this is employee parking. So this is more of a maneuvering for the site function. And there is bins that you can see kind of at the upper right corner here that's going to store like stone and mulch and other type of landscaping material.
Okay, thank you very much. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
The appellant, Eagle Landscaping and Supply Company, is requesting the following variances from the board. A variance of 58 feet and 7 inches for the minimum front yard setback for fences, 60 feet required, 1 foot and 5 inches proposed. A variance to allow parking within the front 60 feet of the street right-of-way line in the I-1 zoning district. No building structures, parking, or open storage permitted nearer than 60 feet from the street right-of-way, and parking in the front 60 feet proposed. The property is located on the north side of West 8 Mile Road, west of Loser at 22108 West 8 Mile Road. Sidwell parcel 2433476060, zoned I-1 industrial. The subject property is developed with a landscaping yard for Eagle Landscaping and Supply Company. The property to the north is zoned I-1 industrial and is developed with a landscaping yard. The property to the east is zoned B3 general business and is developed with industrial warehousing. The property to the west is zoned IL light industrial and is developed with industrial warehousing. The properties to the south across West 8 Mile Road in the city of Detroit are zoned B4 general business and are developed with a restaurant with a drive-through and multiple family. The site contains 1.61 acres of land with 203.78 feet of frontage on West 8 Mile Road and a depth of 338.82 feet. The city council approved the special land use and rezoning requests on October 27, 2025 to expand the landscaping yard operations of Eagle Landscaping and Supply Company to the subject parcel. The site plan to be approved administratively when the rezoning is fully enacted and published, anticipated December 2025, proposes to add parking, outdoor storage of landscaping material, and renovation of the existing building for warehousing. The site improvements also bring the property up to current ordinance standards with landscaping, screening, a bike rack, a pedestrian connection, and notably stormwater maintenance controls. The I-1 zoning district prohibits structures, open storage, and parking within 60 feet of the front right-of-way, and the applicant proposes fencing and parking both within 60 feet of the front right-of-way. The closest portion of the fencing, which is, is proposed to be 1 foot and 7 inches from the front right-of-way. The subject fencing is decorative in nature and will match the fencing already in use at Eagle Landscaping's existing business. Such fencing can be found at their existing site at 20779 Loser Road, which includes West 8 Mile Road frontage to the west of the subject site. The planning director may approve fencing up to 8 feet in height by zoning ordinance for uses which demonstrate the need for increased security measures and has approved the proposed fence height. Existing buildings to the west and east are approximately 24 feet and 40 feet respectively from the front right-of-way line. The property to the east has existing parking spaces approximately 14 feet from the property line. Historical photos show the site, show the subject site utilized parking up to the right-of-way line prior to its acquisition and development by Eagle Landscaping. In addition to the decorative fencing, 19 shrubs are proposed between the fencing and West 8 Mile Road to further obscure and soften the view of the parking area. On January 15, 2019, ZBA case 18-36 from Eagle Landscaping, ZBA approved case 1836 from Eagle Landscaping, which provided a similar variance to reduce front yard landscaping 24 feet proposed.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
I do.
Are there any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
I can answer any questions that you have, but no additional facts.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read their recommendation, please?
Staff's recommendation is to approve the variances requested based on the following. The variances requested will have minimal adverse effects on the surrounding properties due to the comparable conditions and layouts. The variances requested will not be obtrusive or injurious to surrounding properties due to the commercial and industrial nature of the area, the decorative fencing, proposed shrub screening, and decreased visibility due to the fast-moving traffic along West 8 Mile Road. The proposed changes at the site will enhance the aesthetics of the area due to the installation of landscaping and decorative fencing.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add before we open public comment?
Nope.
Okay. I think everybody left is part of your party, so, but we will open public comment. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. I just want to take a minute, Nico. We don't have this electronically, so we, Mo and I are kind of like blind here. It wasn't in the electronic packet.
I have an additional 11 by 17 if you would like to look at something.
I mean, I drove by the property. I just can't figure out where this parcel is.
Okay, yeah. Can I come show you?
I'm so sorry, Jody. So I drove, yeah. So, I mean, is it where, there's currently a big mound of mulch?
There's, there's, yeah, there's a concrete area that faces, I can come show you if you want me to approach. I can.
Again, we tried to go through this. They go. No, there's mulch on 8 Mile. Yeah. Yeah, and then there's a big white building, and then there's a road.
So the mulch is probably here.
Oh, okay.
If you're familiar with 8 Mile, there's a building that's freshly bricked.
Uh-huh. Right in the front, like right close to the road?
Yes, that's where the parking is going to be, right in front of that new facade of building.
Oh, okay, all right. I'm way farther west. Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Yeah, well, and WRC.
Yeah, WRC.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
Yes.
Um, okay. Who, any opinions? Oh, you don't have, what do you think, Mr. Rogers?
I think it's great. I, I think it's just a continuation of what they already have, which aesthetically looks very pleasing. So, I mean, they keep their yard in impeccable condition.
Right.
And it looks like they're just trying to expand their business.
So did you acquire another parcel or were just kind of redesigning?
Yes, yes. The parcel that, to the, the one that is building is a new building that you've acquired, correct?
I, I, yeah.
The, they're just asking, they're just asking which, if one of these properties was newly acquired within, that you're approving upon.
The building with a brand new brick front on it. I re-bricked the whole front of it, make it better looking, cleaned the place off, painted the build in. Kind of created a lot there. Got a lot of work that were making the place. It was some rough shakers and done.
And you didn't own that building?
No.
You, you acquired that building recently?
No, yeah, we just, we're doing good business and we needed more room, so we paid for them to move.
Yeah, I don't know if you remember, there was a, like a house kind of look in the front of that building? And they had eliminated that. That's basically where the parking was. So now it matches more of the commercial district. What was there before was really out of place.
Okay.
So this.
It was a whole time, walk an old house in the front. We tore the house down and we bricked the front of the building and put limestone across the front of it. You don't have no.
Yeah, there, there is, uh, there is actually like in the packet, there was other like photos, and it might be in your big printout, but like SP 103 shows you the fencing and the landscaping and, um, it, yeah, I think you're close answer.
Yeah, the fencing is beautiful. I mean, it is a beautiful property, and obviously you have a lot of product on the property as well. But, yeah, I, Mr. Jenkins, yes?
They've been there for years and from a construction standpoint, people use Eagle all the time, okay? They're well-recognized and anything to suggest that could help them and, because they could help others because they're, a lot of subcontractors use their products, okay?
We've been there since 1953.
No one, no one, no one I'm familiar with.
Madam Chairperson, can we have him speak to, stand at the microphone and introduce himself?
Yeah, Ron Eagle, fifteen ninety-four Pleasant Valley Road, Brighton. Yeah, we've been there since nineteen fifty-three. My grandpa started a company in twenty-six. I grew up on that property.
Okay, very well.
Yeah, I went to Southfield Schools. All my brothers there.
Just trying to make sure we, we agree with what you're trying to do. Okay, I got you.
All right.
How do you recommend?
Okay.
Recommendation?
All right, great. Mr. Friedman?
Favorable.
I have a question.
Okay. Mr. Rogers, did you, I don't know if I asked you to speak to it.
Oh, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Okay, all right. I, yeah, I mean, based on what I can see, I don't have any concerns. Again, beautiful property, lovely fence. I mean, obviously you, it, it's, it can sometimes be hard there along Eight Mile, so thank you for adding to that area, really, truly. So, Mr. Rogers, will you make a motion?
Say what? In regard to ZBA case twenty-five dash twenty-eight, the appellant, Eagle Landscaping and Supply Company, is requesting the following variances from the board. One, a variance of fifty-eight feet and seven inches for the minimum front yard setback for fences. Sixty feet required, one foot and seven inches proposed. And two, a variance to allow parking within the front sixty feet of the street right-of-way line in the I-dash-one zoning district. No building, structures, parking, or open storage permitted nearer than sixty feet from the street right-of-way, parking in the front sixty foot proposed. The property is located on the north side of West Eight Mile Road at two-two-one-zero-eight West Eight Mile Road, Sidwell Parcel number twenty-four dash thirty-three dash four-seven-six dash zero-six-zero, zoned I one industrial. I make a motion to approve said requested variances based on the fact that the variances requested will have minimal adverse effects on the surrounding properties due to comparable conditions and site layouts, comparable conditions and site layouts. Two, the variances requested will not be obtrusive or injurious to surrounding properties due to the commercial industrial nature of the area. The decorative fencing, proposed shrub screening, and decreased visibility due to the fast-moving traffic along the West Eight Mile Road. And three, the proposed changes at the site will enhance the aesthetics of the area due to the installation of landscaping and decorative fencing.
Great, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great, your requests are granted.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you for being you.
All right, so that closes our public hearing. We have one set of minutes from September second, which I think was the last time we were together. Anybody have any changes? Otherwise, I'll accept a motion to approve those minutes. Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved. We have a staff request to cancel the meeting on December second. Can I have a motion to cancel that meeting? Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That meeting is canceled. December sixteenth. I believe we now have two cases?
Yes, we do. They're both commercial.
Okay, two commercial cases, and deadline's passed, so that'll be it, plus our annual meeting, which includes election of officers, review of, so you'll include in our packet the rules of procedure?
I will. I'll actually send them out in advance. That way you guys have time to thoroughly review them.
Great. I think we're doing pretty well, but if anybody wants to make changes to our rules of procedures, we wanna make sure we get those to Nicole as early as possible. And then the calendar, we'll get that too. Okay. So, December sixteenth, that will be the latest meeting I think we've ever had on this board.
What are you trying to say? Santa Claus is on his way?
Exactly, yeah. Somebody better bring gifts. That's all I'm saying.
Twenty-four.
All right. Any miscellaneous? I would say nice job this evening. That was a law, a, a large caseload. Can I have a motion to adjourn at eight-thirty-three? And a second? Thank you. All those in favor, aye, and we're outta here.